Thank you. I'd like to thank you for coming to the April 24th, 2025 meeting. Carol, meeting. Thank you. I'd like to take action on the minutes for March 30th and April 3rd. I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Take action on the one day alcohol license for the Stockbridge Library on May 2nd, 2025 from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I make a motion, we accept.
I second.
Right, we have a.
Can I, we had to change the date and I did email that to Terry and she said that she would change the application from May 2nd to June 6th. So it's still a Friday.
Motion approved as amended? Can we do that? Yes. Motion approved as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's not, that's not for children's reading hour, right?
Yes.
That's not. All right.
Six snacks and stocks.
Take action on a one day alcohol and entertainment licenses for the Pan Mass Challenge held at Camp Mackinac on October 3rd and October 4th, 2025. I make a motion, we accept.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Much early.
That was, that was a good plan.
It's a great event.
Get that so early.
Municipal town directional signs, review, discuss, vote. So, who would like to begin?
Well, we have people.
We have.
If you like, I can walk you through the, so you have three recommendations from myself, from Barbara, from Virga. Just explain who they are. So, the three.
The town administrator.
Yeah. Town administrator, Michael Canales, Georgia Marsden.
He is the former town.
Finance committee, former town administrator, and then from Barbara Zanetti, our Chamber of Commerce director. So, the chamber has asked for the signs to stay where they are. Georgia has made a recommendation to move the sign at the War Memorial to the other side of the Cat and Dog Fountain, if possible, work with the state, possibly locate it there, right where the Y would split. And then remove the one that's on up at Hawthorne on Gold Meadows. My recommendation.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry.
That's not my recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I misspoke?
Yes, you did. You know the poke.
I apologize, Georgia.
Okay.
Georgia, would you like to clarify?
Please, give, since you're here, give your.
So the one at Gold Meadows, move it. Not get rid of it. Move it across the street.
Oh.
On 183, there's a swale, but the, the sign can go over the swale facing this way. So you can read it from both ways, north and south. So it's like almost directly across from Hawthorne Road. And you can read it. Now, if you go.
You mean towards Bullard Woods?
No.
No.
Or the other one.
By the Apollo.
By the Apollo.
Apollo site.
Yes, on that side.
Okay.
And if you go now where the sign is, you can only read it really by Hawthorne Road. Because coming up 183, there's two large trees there and it kind of blocks it.
Well, it's got the trees down.
I have.
And so I'm, I am not saying get rid of any of the signs. I'm just saying relocate two and leave the one at the cemetery. But take out the metal signs that are.
Metal.
Are the little ones.
That's right. I was, I was gonna say at the end, the one thing we all three agreed on was the cemetery one.
Had waited, had waited till we.
Made a decision.
Before we took them out.
Right, I understand you.
And it was winter.
Just saying also.
Just a minute, Patrick.
We.
Both of you were talking, I'm just saying.
Have now met as a group, the three of us, to discuss it. Because I was waiting for Michael to say whether it was a legitimate committee and we have to post the meetings and so forth. And Barbara and I have been talking about this for a long time. I've checked with Michael a couple of times. So this is why we each have written our own thoughts about the sign.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're good.
And I apologize, I forgot that you wanted them across the way. And then I, my recommendation was to take the sign at Gold Meadows, repurpose it to be the beach sign. And then I recommended that the sign, that one of the things you could do with the sign at the, at the War Memorial is repurpose it for a Park Street sign, for the Park Street Park amenities hours and things like that. So you have a couple of options for what the board can consider.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. They're getting back to us. Cause there was confusion about that. All right. Thoughts, Chucky?
My thoughts?
I actually raised my hand.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to suggest that we split this up into three decisions and focus on each sign separately and make a vote on each sign separately. I, there's a lot of moving parts here and that way we can kind of focus and finish on each decision. I think there are three very different decisions before, rather than one vote.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Let's start with the.
Congregational church.
Yeah.
No one seems to be against that one, right?
Oh, Denny was, if I recall.
What's that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The congregational church.
They're talking about that side.
Like, I, I understand. But I'll bow to the wisdom of the board on that. Okay? I felt it was a safety issue for me on a bicycle, but.
Okay.
Let's get, I made my case and I think other people have other thoughts.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we're gonna leave that one.
Wait, but we're talking about also taking down.
You said you want to do one at a time.
We're, we're not.
Thought we got it.
We had the other signs that we were talking about potentially taking down that were also in proximity to that sign.
Well.
Cause it looks.
The metal one.
Yeah, they would. The only reason we left them until we decided what we're gonna do with this sign. Once this sign gets voted in, then those signs come down.
Okay. And it was winter.
No, I, I don't have any problem. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what was deciding for everybody.
So the decision would be to make the motion to keep the sign there, remove all the other directional signs.
I'm good with that. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the congregational church or cemetery sign stays. Metal signs come out. Second sign, over by the Episcopal Church and the War Monument. So do we keep it or remove it?
I like Georgia's recommendation that we, we remove it and try to move it onto the state property if that is allowable by the state. But then in the term.
You mean state property?
Cause that part, the island, part of the island is the mass DOT. And part of, the very front part is ours.
That one sounds difficult.
So I said in my report that I would be willing to work with the town with mass DOT about location of that sign at that island. So when you're coming up Route 7, should I be standing up there?
No, yeah, yeah.
If you're coming up Route 7, then you'll know which lane to get in. Either the left or the right, if you wanted to go down to like the Rockon Museum, St. Louis there. Or if you wanted to go to the theater or whatever, you've known to be on the right hand lane.
This is one where we may want a public input too, but.
Katie?
I like that idea.
Okay, um, there's some in the corner.
Kate Fletcher.
Kate Fletcher.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I'm speaking in my capacity with the, I don't know if the video is. Michael, the video is, is not, you can't turn it on, but that's fine.
Yeah.
So, speaking in my capacity as, as Chair of the Fountain Committee, my feeling is that that's a space that the more green we can keep it, especially given that the fountain, the cat and dog are there. And my comment would be that you want that to be the highlight. And I realize the suggestion is for the southern end, but there's already signs there. And that strikes me as taking it away from the direction of preserving the green space and sort of the more historic nature of that area and bringing it more into the realm of, of signs brawl. So I like Michael's suggestion, which is to repurpose the Civil War Monument sign over to Park Street where currently it's, it's a park that gets a lot of use from folks in town and visitors. And I think that actually having a sign there could, could work well and, and be nice. So that would be, that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Hey Kate?
Thank you.
Kate, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
I can't remember. What signs are on the end of that island?
There's states.
There's some, some state directional signs. I think one of them might remind you to, you know, go right instead of going into the wrong lane. I can't remember exactly.
I can't.
Yeah.
Go by it every morning, we get my coffee coming back, but I can't picture what signs are there.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, given that the signs are sort of, you know, they're pretty tall. I just, I, I like driving into town with that beautiful, large, you know, what I think of as our own Rockefeller Christmas tree. After all, you know, Christmas in Stockbridge, the, the networks panned on that tree as well, right? They didn't pan on the, on the signs there. So I like the idea of as you're approaching town, you've got the birch trees and the spruce tree. And that you just keep that area as uncluttered as possible.
And Mike, what is sort of the rules about if it's state signs putting local signs?
So we would have to go for an access permit to put the, the sign there. We could apply for it. If the state won't allow it, that'll kill it anyways. The state might tell us how to incorporate the signs that are needed there as directional into our sign. There's a couple of things.
All right, so it's not necessarily easy thing.
No, but it's one of those things that if you want us to look into it, I'll, I'll apply next week for, to see what they say.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I like a sign where it is, but I know it's pretty controversial, so I have. And I'm not gonna argue to leave it there.
So.
And I also.
Just, just so you know, I do like it there. I think it looks nice. It doesn't really affect my mind, but I'm not gonna fall my fist on the test to leave it there. I will go with a vote to move it. That's just my opinion, so.
So I've been, I've had a lot of calls and emails about that. And I know the veterans feel that it's a detriment to, to the whole monument. And I have also been told that is, when they do their prayers there, that's right where they, like the priest stands and other people stand for that memorial day. But I also feel that it's, if you're walking and there are several people, there's that pull when you get to the road, it's kind of blocks the traffic. If the traffic's gonna come through, you really have to turn around that sign to see if the traffic's going straight through or making a right hand turn. So I thought of the island part. I don't like the idea of repurposing it. I will say that I know that the chamber used meal and lodging money that was given to them to promote Stockbridge. And that's not promoting Stockbridge if you're going to repurpose it and put it down at the park. Maybe do a sign to re, make a sign for that down at the park. But don't repurpose this sign, which is telling us about different tourist attractions that people might not know about.
But, but don't you feel, you know, Mary Flynn Trail and Ice Flynn and Lawrence Howard get so much traffic that actually people driving to that parking lot to park down there would actually potentially see, you know, some of that signage to, you know, just be aware that there's other attractions in town. I mean, it does get a lot of traffic down there for.
I was looking, thinking of what Michael was saying was to take all that down and make all the different signs, like the rules for what the park is used for and all that. Not to leave the tourist signs there. You want to repurpose it.
Yeah.
And I feel that's not.
But, but if we were to not repurpose it, but simply use it to say other places to visit in Stockbridge, we could just listen about the arrows.
Right, change the slats, right?
You'd have to take the arrows and the mileage off, that's all.
But where I'm proposing these, you really don't have to change the sign except for you really want to see the font. And I think the mileage on there detracts from it. So if you just had the arrow, it would be fine. But I'm just saying that this is, this is what they were to use the money for is to promote Stockbridge. And that's what they did. And now all of a sudden you want to repurpose one.
Well, let's talk a second of this one, though.
Have to all compromise. I think we all have to do compromise.
I mean, in this case, in this case, we would be just like, you know, kind of helping to promote the other destinations without the directional signs or the mileage. It would just be on your way, you know, maybe toward, toward the end in that parking lot that we now own, by the way. We could just basically say, by the way, visit all these other places. I don't know, it's, it's imperfect, but people.
Right. We're willing to take it away from the church, but maybe.
The Civil War, not from the church.
Well, it's in that by the church.
Right, but it's in front of the Civil War Monument. And that's what people are upset about.
What if we, we move it for now and look into that one a little further detail before we decide?
And I looked to put it to, to the left, towards, in front of the Austin Rigs property, the 25, but there's two trees there. That's not gonna work. And I looked at how tall it was and wasn't gonna fit underneath the state sign next to St. Paul's Wall.
Yeah.
That's congestion there too.
So, I, I personally have looked at all different things for this specific sign.
And while I, I was originally saying repurpose it as a park sign with the name of the park and the hours.
Right.
It could be repurposed as a directional sign for the Mary Flynn and others, yeah.
And that's if you read Michael's write-up, that's what he said. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
Michael, can I make a comment? Or Jamie? I'm sorry, Jamie, can I make a comment? Sorry about that, Jamie.
Yep, thanks, Kate.
Thank you. I think that, I like that idea of working on repurposing it. I mean, not, you know, considering which, which places to raise awareness of as Patrick was describing. And I like Chucky's idea of, of giving that a little bit more thought as well in terms of where it would be placed. And I especially like that because my understanding is that Mary Flynn had something to do with the plantings at the island where the cat and dog fountain is. So I think it would be better to keep that area clear. I don't know exactly what Mary would want. I know she was very involved in building the little chamber shed on, on Main Street. But I like to think that she would have liked to keep it green. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, can I just say one other thing? That those state signs could probably be incorporated into the directional sign that's already across them. Because now there's not, there's like two or three of those state signs. And those birch trees are, look like they're failing.
Yeah, they are.
Most of us, you can see on your screen.
Yeah. Barbara has her hand up.
Barbara?
Hi. The sign at the current location actually is working very well. I've seen a lot of people, especially foot traffic, that come to town during the Main Street Christmas weekend, Winter Lights, the Pumpkin Fest, that actually stop to look at the sign. I just want to reiterate again, we worked with the town to put the signs where signs are visible. Cause a sign is only as good as its placement. So we did choose that location so that it could be seen north, south, east and west. Again, the chamber doesn't want to lose the signs or repurpose the signs. If we can come up with the suggestion of having it on the island on the opposite side where Georgia is suggesting, we would be more than happy with that than losing the signs altogether. Because again, these are for us to promote what we have in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Barbara, I have a question for you. So if the feeling is that they're, they're more effective as pedestrian signs, they're positioned and designed the way they are as signs that can be viewed by motor vehicles. There are a number of sign designs that, that would be low to the ground on a slight angle that people might be able to see, in fact, maybe see better because right now they're not the right angle if you're walking up and down Main Street. We could conceivably consider some kind of low to the ground sign that would give people kind of directional indication that, that could accomplish that goal without the sort of garish, kind of block the view of turning in traffic and block the view of the monument. Would that be something that anybody would want to consider? I'm just hoping another can of worms, I don't know. So brainstorm.
I just want to go back to like 1888. I first started back this last.
You started with the town in 1888?
Yeah.
No, I'm kidding.
1888.
Oh, okay.
The selectmen voted not to have any signs on that island. So.
Well, that's.
I just want to say, and then ever since, they've never had even.
On the island or on the, in front of the war monument?
In front of the whole thing. Yes, that is considered, even on the sidewalks in the middle of it, that's considered the whole island.
Oh, you're talking about the.
Civil War.
You're not talking about the Cat and Dog Fountain Island?
Talking about that one.
Okay, you're talking about.
On the other.
Okay.
Okay, we could remove the War Monument sign, put it, ask permission of the DOT. But if they disagree, if they say no, then we can do it at the Park Street.
And we could do it at Park Street as a directional sign for the Mary Flynn and other, instead of for the park.
Well, right, but that area.
For the others. Like, we could apply next, I can work with Georgia, we can apply next week. The state's either gonna say, yeah, you can put a sign there or no. They'll, they'll have somebody come out.
Because if they say no, we can't fix that.
Right.
We need an alternative.
So I would recommend that we look into the state, see how it works. See if it fits. If it doesn't, you putting a weight on it about him or, where would people park up top?
Where on Park Street?
Yeah.
Seems like at the top. Right?
All right, now, let's, let's talk about the island first and then we decide. We, we don't like that talking about Park, Park Street. My concern with the island, what's that?
Sorry, please.
My concern with the island is, as you're coming around that corner on South Street, toward the stop sign, people whip around that corner and then it splits into two lanes of traffic. And all of a sudden you got people looking at 10 slots of signs. And, you know, I, I don't know that we want to encourage a distraction as you're approaching a stop sign there where people, we've all seen them speed or flapping around that corner. And I think, you know, frankly, that Kate, you know, Kate and the Fountain Committee have worked really hard on that. And, and I thought that what Kate said was compelling. So I, I, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a placement on Park Street that could accomplish not so much, somebody coming down Park Street is coming for one or two reasons. They're gonna play a game in the soccer field or they're going to one of the trails. We don't need directional signs to the soccer field or the trails. But if we could put it there and promote what it's meant to promote now, which is visiting some of these other places in town, that I think would be a reasonably good use that would at least keep some benefit to the chamber. I would also point out, Barbara, that when I go in for these signs in whatever, you know, decade this was in prior times, it was, it was in specific response to the challenges that the nonprofits were having during COVID. And those challenges are largely passed now in my discussions with nonprofit leaders in this town. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm cognizant of the need to promote everybody, but also recognizing that this was really triage and coming out of a once in a lifetime experience where, where people had seen their revenues drop off by more than half. I think we're all over those. And so, so now maybe we, we, we can rethink overall kind of what the purpose here is. And Barbara, has your hand up?
These signs were actually started back in 2017. They were designed and we've gone through three different boards that pushed these signs through at specific locations. We started with the Elm Street sign and then we moved on to the other sign. So it was pre-COVID. So I understand what you're saying, but it was, the idea of the signs were there prior to COVID. And I would think that maybe if you're going to take that sign down, that we can not have to make the decision that it's gonna go to Park Street and maybe look at finding another location. Maybe it's as simple as putting it in front of the town offices. Or in front of the park on Park Street. You know, it's just still another location that you could see the cultural institution signs. Or coming into Stockbridge on 102, maybe there's property there that we could look at. Just another thought. That's what we would have done if we met as a committee.
So we incorporate it with the front sign out here. It'd be more pedestrian. You may see it with traffic, but a lot of people walk there.
We actually have to replace the front.
I was gonna say it's all mold.
We put that sign in there, we put that. All right. Connect it together. So you have the, the town's talking, the sign, all that, then you have that. That's more pedestrian one. You may see some traffic, but a lot of people walk there.
We could just take it down and then have, have the chamber recommend locations.
Yeah, I think that's.
So we could just make the decision to take it up from the memorial and decide where to put it after more.
At a later date.
More thoughts.
Let the chamber itself look at different options and come back to us.
We won't get rid of it or do anything to damage it. Just hold on to it.
Is that okay, Barbara? Are you happy with that or?
Yes, but I still would prefer to look into the island. I would like to say you're taking it down. You're going to go to the state to see if we can put it on the island. And if that's a mixed, then go to another location.
Yes, we can do that.
All right.
Kate?
Yeah, I love the idea of, of taking it, I love looking, having options. So I love the idea of taking it down and then considering other options and taking it from there. Thank you.
I just don't, I don't know.
Patrick?
I don't know that we're, I'm comfortable saying that the priority is the island when we haven't thought through the other options.
Well, I wouldn't say it's priority. Let's just say we do it to give us the option.
Yeah, that's right. We see if we.
It's two parts.
If they agree to put it there, it doesn't lock us into it.
Right.
It just means it's an option.
Let's just see if we can have the option to put it.
And then they can decide as a group.
I'm sure if they say yes and we decide that we changed our mind, they're not gonna.
If it doesn't meet their criteria, they're not gonna let us.
Right, is it a dangerous or is it too, like Patrick said, if it's too dangerous?
Access permit and tell them that we're considering this and see if they'll grant it. And then we'll know if it's an option.
Right.
And we'll charge you.
I just want to make one comment to Patrick. If they're at that stop sign right now at the Red Island and I'm in the left-hand lane, but I see the tourist attraction that I want is off to the right, there's an accident right there where you have, and that's what I said in August.
Which is why you want to put it at the south side.
That's where I thought would be a little safer and save the sign. But now you all, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Clarify.
Well, let's get the option from the state if we can do it. And then we can decide if it's feasible at that point. Whether we're not cutting it out, but we're not saying yes.
I can.
And we can put on our thinking caps and see what might work or not work.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we take it down, save it. Look, look into this, tell Mike, look into the state, see if it's doable. And then we address that sign at a later date.
What's a reasonable timeframe to make a final decision?
Should we second it before we discuss the date?
What's that?
Don't we need to second it and then discuss the date?
I'll second it.
Okay, now the date.
I would like a date certain for when this recommendation comes in. I don't want to be meeting in a year with people saying, no, you never decided to do anything. So how about 60 days or 90 days?
How about 60? 60 seems good.
60 days.
Is that enough for you?
60 days pending.
I'll get an application in next week.
How long do they take?
Uh, depends on how much review they're gonna require.
60 days pending state.
And if they take longer, we.
Okay.
Date in 60 days from today.
Pending state approval, within those 60 days. So if you have to extend it, we can extend it. So if we have to extend it, we can extend it.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, last but not least, the Gould Meadow.
Ron.
Katie?
Can I make a suggestion? I like the idea of repurposing it, moving it to the town beach, keeping all the attractions. They are just kind of point arrows if you go north or south. And then making the top slot saying town beach. It will blend in and will still give everybody all the options of what's still in town. And that will kill two birds with one stone because somebody stole our beach sign.
Thank you, Katie. Kate Fletcher? Kate?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't lower my hand. I might speak a little bit, but I want to listen first. Thank you, Jamie.
Welcome. Ron?
You like that, don't you?
Ron Roker, chairman of the Conservation Commission. When I first saw the sign, actually I drove by it three times before I did see it. Because there's so many other little signs there on occasions during the summer. There's tag sale signs and there's Tangwood signs.
Berries of the Halloweys signs.
So I drove by it and I said, what does that say? So rather than stop in the middle of the intersection and cause an accident because they drive barrels rapidly through there, I parked, got out and looked at it and said, no, this is not a good idea. First off, my first thought was, why did they put it right there? I guess it sort of draws your attention, but you can't see it from the road. And what you do see is this four by eight or whatever it is size. And you don't look at the view anymore. I've seen wedding pictures taken at that location. And I'm sure they didn't pick that location because it's a big sign there. So I'm okay with moving the sign to cross 183 to the corner. And it'll still do your directional, you know, take a left down Hawthorne, go down 183. And it doesn't, it doesn't catch your eye into the view. I mean, you've still got your picturesque view and you don't have the sign. Whether or not it's appropriate for that area, I don't, I don't really care, but I don't think it's eligible the way it sits. I know the Chamber of Commerce likes it, but most of the people that sign those letters do not live in the town of Stockbridge either. And the Chamber of Commerce is looking to increase their business, which I think is probably a good idea. But also, where do you park when you finally can't find town? You can't park on Main Street, there's no parking. So maybe the Chamber of Commerce could work on that rather than trying to get more people to come to town. I'm okay with directions, it's terrible if people are driving around in circles and can't find where they're going or what they're looking for. But as for the placement of that aside, I think it was a terrible idea. And I'm okay with it being moved, but where it sits now is not good. And I really appreciate if you would consider moving it to at least the other side of Route 183. Or if you want to repurpose it to town beach, I'm okay with that too. Though I think that the purpose of it was to try to direct people from Lennox, Tangwood, that area into sections of town. I just, it's got to go from where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Tom Stokes?
Am I already here or would you rather I stand up there?
Everyone gets their moment.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for revisiting this issue tonight. I know it's, the feelings about this and I have, and sometimes I've gotten rather angry about it, but it's a very, a condescending mood here tonight and I do appreciate that. I am most concerned about the Gould Meadows sign of the three signs because I feel that I totally sympathetic with the chamber and their wishes to promote our cultural attractions. But I think that particular spot is one of the most magnificent views in all of Stockbridge, where you look out on Gould Meadows, beyond that, the Stockbridge Bowl. It's a natural area. It's an area that people contributed money so that the town could acquire that land. There are a lot of citizens who gave money and it's under the purview of the Stockbridge Conservation Commission. So to me, that's a pristine view that, that should not be compromised, in my opinion, by that selling. My personal preference would be to repurpose it at another location. I think the town beach is definitely a good idea or there might be some other areas. If it is decided by this body that no, it really needs to be there, I would like to offer a different suggestion rather than across the street on 183. And I took some pictures there this afternoon and spent a little time there. And Kate has those pictures, would it be okay? Can you, Kate, put them up on the screen? Do you have the wherewithal to do that?
With Jamie's permission, I guess, and sharing is not turned on.
You may share your pictures?
It should be on now.
Mike says it's on, okay, good. So if you put a.
Hey, make sure you don't get any.
Okay, the pictures I sent you this today, picture number one would come first.
And maybe you say okay, yeah, good.
So this is looking at the sign from Tanglewood corner of the property. And this is off the main road, so cars could actually park there and not obstruct traffic. This is on the Tanglewood corner. And if the sign where you see it now on the far side of Hawthorne Road were moved forward to the north side of Hawthorne Road, it would still be essentially the same directions, but cars could pull over and look at it. And you wouldn't have cars stopping at that dangerous corner. And also if it was fairly close to the trees you see on the left, it wouldn't really compromise the view of Gould Meadows the way the current location is. So, you know, that would probably not be on town right away property because it's a bit off the road, but probably we'd have to have Tanglewood agree to have it. It's part of the Gould family house lot there. But I, I think that if, if you do feel strongly that the sign needs to be in this location, I think that would be a preferable place. Kate, if you could put a picture two, that would be great. So this is looking north from the other side. So essentially you see the sign there on the right where it is now. And where it would be moved to is just the north side of Hawthorne Road. And to me, that would be a better compromise. But again, I, I do like the idea of repurposing it. Now to Georgia's good suggestion, on the other side of 183, Kate, if you could show picture number three, please. I, I just feel that, first of all, it's a dangerous corner. Cars would still have to stop to look at the sign. And also I do think that trench is somewhat problematic in terms of inserting a sign in the location of that trench. So those are the comments I wanted to make and thank you very much.
Thank you for that, for doing your homework. So I think it's a two-part. One is do we remove it and two is where do we put it? So can we have a motion to remove the sign?
Sorry, I, I think that that might be a sightline issue where that suggestion was.
Okay.
Because it's, correct, Michael, wouldn't you say that if you're coming up there and you go, want to take a right or a left? If it was to the spot that Tom had suggested?
The first one.
Yes.
Yeah, it could be. And what we'd have to do is take a look at the sightlines as far as are we maintaining? There's a certain, so people are aware of sightlines. You have to be able to see a certain distance up the road without it being deflected based on the speed. The speed's 40 through there, 45, they actually tell you, that's going to be roughly 300 and something feet where we have to keep it clear. So what we did is we went around with actual four by eight sheets and measured and.
That would be on same with property two though, correct?
Possibly.
That would be an issue.
Repetitive, but I think the two, again, the two favorable arguments with that site was, one, the safety issue, cars can actually pull over and look at it. And two, it's that it's, it's not so much in your face in front of the, I guess, the Gould Meadows Stockbridge Bowl view.
So I just want to say, it's not a problem with a swale because I talked to Hugh yesterday. We know 24 feet approximately from the blacktop into that, into there. And he would be, he said it was no problem to put the sign over the swale. So it's not going to be facing this way.
What does that mean, this way? It's not going to be facing this way, I don't know.
In other words, it's not, when you're at Hawthorne Road, it's not going to be facing you there. You're only going to see the post. So it's going to be more for the north-south people.
Okay.
And I did travel that three times yesterday. I kept turning around and going and looking and that was my best suggestion and not repurposing the sign. Again, I'm against repurposing the sign.
A question for Georgia's, I may. What about, Georgia, for people to be able to read the sign, their need to stop, it's kind of a dangerous spot. There's no shoulder at all for people to go over.
The signs aren't designed for people to stop and we're well aware that the font needs to be changed so that it's clearly visible from a further distance. So the font has to get much larger for that because of the speed. There wouldn't be any sightline issues on that side because the road actually curves. The curve of the road does not prevent any sightlines for that side.
And I believe Barbara and I were talking about the verbiage on the signs and making them bigger so people could see them and eliminating the mileage is my project, is my thought. And then just putting the arrows, leaving the arrows so that the signs you could read.
So for what it's worth, I think Georgia's suggestion is definitely preferable to where it is now. But I would urge you to check out both the repurposing option, Stockbridge Town Beach, and also to just examine the northeast corner as I suggested.
Yeah, Kate.
Kate?
Thank you, Jamie. I'll just remind you, I know that when this came, was on the select board agenda in November, Laurel Hill submitted a sign. At that time, they wrote that they agreed that the sign posed a safety hazard and I've, I've heard from other people who felt that way where it is. And, and then another comment they made was that the world has moved on to GPS and, you know, let's, let's recognize that. And my comment is also that, speaking for myself, that the best thing the town can do for, for the business community and the nonprofits is to keep that space as open and as beautiful and as uncluttered as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe these are the kind of issues that we're not going to make everyone 100% happy. We can do our best to find the best compromises. So is, should we make a motion to remove the Gould Meadows sign where it is located now?
I would move it and try it across the road.
So what Georgia said?
Yeah, and then give it a trial period and if it's an issue, we can redress it. Nothing set in stone in any of these.
Is there a motion yet or can we discuss it?
Discussing.
Discussing.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your suggestion.
My suggestion would be move it across the street and try it. And if some razor. Nothing would do in a set in stone, we can move these before we break them apart, you know.
Which street, Chucky? Which street?
Across the border, it's raised.
Towards Kropaloo.
Yeah, away off of Gould Meadows property.
Are you going to change the font or reletter this before you, you got to take them?
I think Barbara already mentioned that.
Yeah, we'll change the font, I know.
So they have to be, I don't think you can pull them apart as they stand and redo it, I'm not sure. You may have to pull them all to redo it.
Yeah, they're, they're designed to come off in case attractions change or there are individual slats underneath, so.
Patrick?
So the problem I have with the other side is simply, you know, I, I agree with much of what Kate said. However, I disagree with the idea that GPS has made us move on. These are advertising signs. They're meant to promote the destinations. They're not meant as mostly directional signs. People are needed, oh, I've seen it go in the Britannia Garden, it's that way. It's, these are advertising signs. Having said that, the problem with it being on the other side of the road is that traffic backs up going to Tanglewood northbound from the south going north. So when the sign is in its current location, then people would see that because they're stuck in traffic. As we've heard in other meetings lately, sometimes people are stuck in traffic for long periods of time. So in that sense, were we to leave it where it is, and I'm not advocating for that, were we to leave it where it is, it would make a lot more sense than putting it on the other side where traffic coming out of Tanglewood is often in the dark and people aren't going to see the sign. Plus they're trying to whiz out as fast as they can, all right? So, and frankly, I don't know how big a font needs to be, but that is a 40 mile an hour zone. And it has to be pretty darn quick to be able to be visible in a 40 mile an hour zone in general. So without the traffic backing up there, I don't see a whole lot of benefit putting on that side. I think that if we're gonna, I, I like what Ron said about the view. And I like what Tom said about how hard people worked to get that view and preserve that view. But if we're going to preserve that view, then I think we should preserve it for every kind of sign. And if we're not going to let these signs go up that'll help the permanent nonprofits who are in Stockbridge, I'm sick and tired of seeing the temporary signs there all the time that promote this or that or the other thing. And frankly, that goes for Tanglewood too. I don't know why they should be able to put up their little signs giving all areas of direction on that property. If we're going to take that sign out of Gould Meadows, I see, say we make it a sign-free zone permanently and don't let anybody, temporary or otherwise, put up a sign that impacts Ron's view, which is an excellent, excellent point, Ron. All right? So in that case, I would suggest that the idea of moving it up to Park Street makes, I'm sorry, the beach takes the most sense to me because frankly, I don't see any place there that works. I don't think that moving on to Tanglewood property is ever going to happen. And, and, and at least over there, we could promote some of the nonprofits as well as announce that this is the beach and it becomes a repurposed sign over on Mackinac Road. So that's what I would suggest might be the best course action, though I'm welcome to feedback. We often get these decisions wrong, it turns out. So, you know, if you have any thoughts, show them now.
Can I jump off on that?
Yes.
If we move it to the town beach, all we would have to do is get rid of the mileage signs. You want to have to repurpose or change the fonts because people that are at the beach are parking and they want to take a walk up and look. That's going to save a lot of time and money without having to change every slab. I just wonder if you can just paint over the mileage.
What's the speed limit on that one?
30.
30.
Might be 25. Exactly, or what's 25 now, but yeah.
It's 35.
Yeah. It's still a lot safer than that corner.
Changing the speed limit tonight.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'd say we move it to the beach.
I'm okay with that because someone stole our sign. Okay.
I just want to state one more time, I'm not for repurposing the Chambers signs. I know what you're doing. You're just taking it from there and sticking it at the town beach, but is it gonna be down?
No.
Down the town beach or is it gonna be up and up at the road where people are gonna stop and see it? Or is it gonna be in that little?
It's on the road, isn't it? It's on the road, so people.
Actually walked.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, I actually walked with Pickley Signs who made these signs and they uh walked me through. Putting a new sign there and you can move it closer to the driveway to the town beach. And have it back uh two feet so you have clearance at the driveway so when you're pulling out, you can see them.
Uh, yeah, and the problem I see is that absent leaving exactly where it is. When reasonable concerns and issues have been raised, both about the tradition of the park and the views.
Oh, I'm not for leaving it where it is.
I understand. I'm saying that in the absence of that, I don't think anywhere in that area serves a practical purpose. You know, that that I mean, the reality is that the one that's by the Civil War Monument works because people are stopped there. But we don't want to leave it there. So in the absence of people stopping like at Hawthorne Road and one eighty three and be able to look left and see the sign. I don't see it. Serving any purpose when people are either coming the wrong direction, going to Tanglewood stuck in traffic or going forty going south. I just don't see a benefit to leaving it over there if we take it out and I I'm listening to the folks who want to take it out.
So if we we have to make a compromise, there has to be. If we want it removed from Gold Meadows, if that is the overall feeling, then it has to be. Repurposed or put away or something, but they were expensive and they were made and Barbara worked really hard. To do this for the Chambers, so we have to come to a compromise and.
Okay, again. I I agree with George's decision to move it across the street. And if we don't remove it across the street, I do not agree with the repurposing. I'd rather take again. Have a committee meeting, look at different locations, possibly down at the Berkshire Botanical Garden intersection. Again, another location that you're looking to see. What the cultural attractions are, not the park. Again, I thank you for, you know. My opinion on this, but the purpose of the signs are exactly what George is saying. It's not repurposing the signs as. It's putting them in another location. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ron? All right.
I know, Ron.
I do believe there's a street light on the opposite side of the road from where the sign is right now. It may not be bright enough to help that sign on the side of the road though. And I don't know if there's anything you can do about that. But. There's a slight chance that this the street light might help. People see that sign up there beside the road.
And Ron, possibly we could do solar lights. That you would have hang off the top of the signs coming down.
Okay, let's not get dark.
Barbara, if we were to put it across the street and I'd like the idea of having the committee get back to us in sixty days with a recommendation. I think we should follow standard. There are standard font sizes that based on speed limits. That that the signs need to be to be effective. And I think you'll find there has to be at least three or four times bigger. Than what the size is there. I mean, and as long as it follows the standard protocols for 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 sign design and those are. Absolutely, you can find them on the web, just search for it, you know, in a forty mile an hour zone, sign fonts should be X size. Three inches taller, whatever it is. You know, I think you're gonna find that those signs are illegible. In the faster that you're going. But that said, I liked Barbara's idea of like let's punt it for sixty days and let the committee come back with recommendations I were to move it.
I have a question on the committee. Are you formally telling us that we are now a committee?
Let's go.
Right, that was the we need to clarify.
We never.
Establishing a committee.
Oh, we did that.
I thought we already did that.
Meeting, blah, blah, blah.
Because that's what you kept telling me that I had messed up because it was a committee and not a working group and.
Right, then we'll have to schedule, we'll schedule the next couple of weeks of meeting of the committee, public can come.
Right, so we're meeting this Barbara, you and myself.
Yep.
And the public. So I'm clear, I just.
Can we? Anybody else want to join in? It doesn't have to be a little bit of three.
And we do this me after the town.
And Barbara.
Meeting, stretched out.
I mean, to be honest, once you send the warrant now in the next.
You're pretty.
Yeah, we can we can get this done in the next, we can meet in the next couple of weeks. We're gonna have to do some site visits at post if we're gonna look at botanical and other places.
But I but I'd like to revisit. So I think the idea is I'll make a motion, take this sign down and relocate it pending the committee recommendation.
So the speed limit recommended height, just so you know, is thirteen inches in a forty mile an hour zone.
Yeah, exactly.
So Barbara, just keep that in mind, forty mile an hour zone, it's a thirteen inch tall si- uh font size.
Is it forty there?
We're gonna make a.
Really little.
Thirty.
Understood.
Yeah.
That's twenty percent of me.
Um, so I make a motion. Well, before we use the motion though, what do you think about the idea of sort of a sign resound for Gold Meadows?
What?
I mean, I'm just saying that we always see like temporary signs from out of town events and attractions that are doing some kind of promotion and. To Ron's point, it's the same distraction of the view, no matter whether it's a temporary sign or a full time sign. And if we're gonna take down. The signs that support our Stockbridge nonprofits on that corner, I don't see why we don't just make it a sign free area.
You have to stay germane. We're just talking about these directional signs because I think that goes under planning board signs. I think they have the sign bylaws stuff.
And Jamie, we can.
No, temporary signs are a select board.
It is.
Temporary signs are select.
It's all right.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I think we have to bring it on a meeting with an agenda. Don't leave it for later tonight.
Does anybody ever apply for a temporary sign?
No, yes, they do. Sometimes they do and and regardless, we have the highway department pull them up if we have a policy. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, you don't like signs interrupting the view?
Can we stay on the directional sense of like pulling.
First of all, we're fine, I'll jump. I made a motion.
I know. Second, all in favor?
There's a motion.
We'll pull it up and have the committee give us the recommendation.
In sixty days. I seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Sign is moved.
So another question, so the other one that you gave sixty days notice for, is that on the committee's agenda also?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything we moved or just put permits on your agenda.
Right.
So the only one that you don't have to worry about is the one out by the cemetery.
And then Hugh will take those three metal ones when he has a chance.
I think one by your driveway would be really nice.
My driveway?
You're all going on your driveway?
My driveway is a hazard.
Specific to your driveway?
All right, can we move moving on?
All right.
Jamie.
Yes.
Um. Um, thank you. Um, is I appreciate that sixty days is a reasonable timeframe for people to come back and make a decision. Um, is anyone concerned about the fact that um if we wait sixty days before we make any final decisions about this? That any sign cha- any signage change will occur. Um, probably pretty close to, if not after, uh people start wandering into town for the season. Because we're talking now about almost the end of June.
Work quicker if you can.
Work quicker for Bruce, please.
It's not just for me. I think if we're if we're doing something, if we're doing this to. Uh, to propagate the the not for profits and whatnot that that we have to offer in the town of Stockbridge. That we should do it at a time where we're gonna have a significant influx of people. That's all.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I think those sixty days was given the state time to do there as well. If the state comes back early enough. On their decision, then.
We can.
As I said, I'll get that I'll get that application in next week and we'll get the state to give us a. Because.
But you can.
Even if they'll give us permission to do it, which.
And the other side.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment, Jamie?
Indeed.
Yeah, my comment would be to to do it right and take the time that's needed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
By that measure, we've done this absolutely right. So we've taken a lot of time.
It's. Moving on. Before I need a cemetery plot. Review and discuss the operational and capital budgets.
Right, since our last meeting, there's been no changes to the operational budget. Um, but there has been changes to the capital budget. So as far as the capital budget, I'm just gonna be refer to the warrant for this. Um, including you have the engineering report, so um. So this is the part that's bad news. So we we've been up in the chime tower. We've been taking a look at the chime tower in the uh far. The large posts that are in each corner of the time chime tower. You have four posts uh to the northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, the north. West one um up on top when we realized that there was a break in the uh. In the slate roof, the water was coming down, going right through a hole and right onto that beam. So they took a screwdriver with about a three inch and they stabbed it right in. You have the pictures in there showing the rot. Um, that is with there. Because of the expansiveness of the rot, we are now exploring the possibility that in order to do the re reconstruction correctly. It looks like we're gonna have to lift the copula off the building. So.
It's fat and bells.
Well, no, we put tarps over the bells to protect the bells. Uh, the bells themselves, it's all stainless. How many bids did we get on this when it was submitted? Uh, we we went out to bid last spring. No, how many? I I yeah.
It's many, it's neat.
Right. I have a point, um, which is, uh, did any of the other vendors have a higher price because they felt that there was more sense of work to done? In other words, if they low bid it and now they're coming back for an extra hundred grand? No. No, because this wasn't even identified by our engineers in the specs. So when we got up and realized how bad it was and it started opening up parts, but this this happens when you get into old old buildings. You don't feel like the engineers missed something because it seems like if all you had to do is take a screwdriver and a piece of wood. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but you know. Now getting all the way up where we were with the scaffolding where you could walk around, um, you know, they were able to take pictures and other stuff. Inside the bill inside itself, the water was running along the support beams inside there. They're rotted out. So it's just changed the scope of the project. Um, at this point, there's not much else. Sort of we opened up this can of worms, so um. I just I just go back to, I don't know, I don't want to call out the engineering firm, but it seems like, you know. Clearly, maybe they missed something. I some of these pictures are are on the inside where you can get to them. From inside the building, not having any scaffolding. Okay.
And pretty rainy.
So some of that they they you didn't see that before and they removed boards and then underneath was rot. So in some of those pictures, what you're seeing is they removed pieces and then the others.
Like, yeah.
I mean, whether or not, whether or not the engineers missed something.
That's.
What is the, what what direction do we go here? We're gonna have to, we've opened it up, it's open now. If we want to get it done in this construction season, so it doesn't affect the spring of twenty twenty six when we want to have. Two hundred and fiftieth and and the rest, then we're gonna have to look at those costs. Now, because this came in. You'll see the dates on there. It's only been over the last two weeks we've been dealing with this. I know. Myself, I went up there, I brought Hugh with me because I knew. I could look at the financial part, Hugh could look at what they were seeing and and uh recommend, you know. Take a good look at it. So refund this, can we still get it done this construction season? Yes, but we're gonna need to appropriate additional funds. So I had to go to the, so they ballpark this and you have it, it's the third, it's the last page. It's a hundred and forty seven thousand additional, forty three of it is the crate crane to bring in in order to. Get the entire copula off. And then get it back down. Now those they admitted, those are probably high numbers because they're ballparking and this was. Because I told them I had to get it so we could. Because you're asking fifty grand out of. Right, and if we don't need this, we're examining each pieces we go along. So if the money doesn't. Yet. Now I have close to fifty thousand right now in contingency funds. But what if they find more beyond this? So I'm basically asking, let's put this money up now, we'll get it off, we'll get it done. And if we don't need to use all of it, if the crane is only there for two days. And what are you asking for? And that. So I'm gonna ask for a hundred and fifty thousand of additional money. From free cash to go into an account to cover potential overrides because of the change order and the extent of the rock. Potential other things that we might not have identified. Just as they open up other pieces and get like below this, as they take the slate off and. Why not appropriate two hundred just in case? It has to get done this. Well, I have another fifty thousand above that. It wasn't nearly enough for the one thing we found. Well, no, because these, this one changed the entire. The reason why this one's so big, so normally you carry a ten to twenty percent contingency. We have a twenty percent contingency on it. The problem is this was such a big change that because we're talking the main support columns and then the. Uh, support beams going up. See, we know it's gonna go back into free cash anyway. But there's. Why not just appropriate enough so that we absolutely can get it done this summer? Because if we don't appropriate enough now. If you guys would like to put more in just in case. Case, it just goes back to free cash. If we don't stand and if we don't spend it, it comes out. I would rather see two hundred. I couldn't. If that's what the board would would like. But I don't think that. I don't think there'll be anything bigger. This isn't that big of a thing. The main cost of a hundred is they're estimating the crane work to be about forty three thousand. So. That's, yeah. And and it's, yeah, we're nine hundred thousand into these monuments. That's what we appropriated in my first year. All right. We're nine hundred thousand in these monuments and we're not gonna leave it with a rotted top on John Gower. So. I would just seem to have a little bit more cushion because it's it's actually really important, in my opinion, that we not be doing construction in the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary year. Yeah. Yeah, and if we don't spend it, it'll just get closed out next year and return back to the free cash. So. All right. Is everyone okay with it? Are you guys, is that?
Okay.
All right, so the two hundred thousand, what that'll do is our number eighteen, which is the transfer of. Money into the general stabilization fund, that'll be reduced by fifty thousand. To seven hundred and sixty four, six thirty two. So we'll change those two lines. We'll issue the change order and we'll begin. Um, could make sure that this project doesn't fall off in this construction season. Yeah. Yeah. All right, so the uh the other one was um. We had reduced the undesigned compensation from forty thousand to ten thousand. And we had talked about setting up a retirement payout stabilization fund. So instead of every year raising forty thousand dollars, leaving it in the budget to just sit there. Which over the last bunch of years, we've collected well, you know, two hundred and forty thousand over since I've been here, we paid out forty. So that's tax raised. Instead, put a hundred thousand free cash into a dedicated stabilization retirement payout account. You can do this. Talk to legal counsel on it. And basically, we'd only replenish this account if it's tapped. So if we go three, four or five years with no one retiring, you wouldn't tap this at all. If it was, then you would tap it and then you would re uh place money back into it. As we've only spent forty thousand in five years. Yeah. So then and then how do you come up with the hundred thousand?
Yeah, and where do we get it?
Just in case you get multiple retirees in a single year, so. In that case, you would just run it through operations, right? I mean, you have to do an operating. No, this would take it out of the operating because we talked about that. See, we did it at fifty. I doesn't really matter. I'm just trying to pay for the fifty we just spent. Yeah, in the end, it it's just there and it can be repurposed for something else or it could just sit there and then when if it's tapped in three or four years by a single person, say somebody does retire. Twenty thousand retirement payout, then you would put twenty thousand back in, maintain a balance. If you want to lower balance, we can lower the balance. We've carried typically forty for that on an annual basis. We could just set it at fifty. Yeah, let's do that.
Don't. Don't we usually know when people are gonna retire? Don't they submit?
Yeah, they.
An app.
They think it's.
So there's there's only two ways to do it. You either carry it in the operational budget and. So there's, there's only two ways to do it. You either carry it in the operational budget and it's taxed risen by taxation every year. Or you set aside money in a dedicated stabilization account for retirement payout. Those are your only two options.
The advantage of doing this way is obviously it, it will offset some of the increase in the tax rate this year.
Yeah. And if it goes for a few years and not being tapped, we're not raising money that's already been raised once before. Right. So.
And did this just come up?
No, we discussed it when we talked about, uh, lowering it, lowering the undesigned compensation line. Would this would, by lowering this, it would raise the number eighteen backup to eight hundred and fourteen thousand being removed in the, to general stabilization. So those are the only two articles that were financial articles, uh, for the budget.
All right. Motion approved.
Second.
All right.
Ask my question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
No, I was just gonna, my question was, you're putting in a special stabilization fund, which is good. But still, don't you have to have a special town meeting to pull it out?
You would be, yes, you'd still have to be withdrawn at a town meeting. It is a majority vote because it's a dedicated account, so it's not a two thirds vote. And then notification, I believe, is six months that you have to give the retirement and on our contracts. So people have to notify us in time that we would have to have the file. Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So those changes are made to the budget, which I've changed in the warrant. The other two thing is we had two petition articles that were submitted. I placed them as number seventeen and number eighteen. It was going in as written. Um, the only question for the board is, where do you want to, if you want to change the location of those? I made the other changes, as you can see, for those ones. Patrick, you proposed.
Historically, we usually do them at the end, don't we?
Yeah. But it's up to you guys' placement of it. I just put them in at the end as a placeholder.
Usually get through the business of the meeting and these are sort of add-ons.
I, I always think that, that the ones that are going to get the most discussion should grow at the beginning as a courtesy of the voter. Uh, I prefer to see these more toward the beginning, but, you know, I don't think, I don't care what the issue is. It, I think that one that are, this is going to have some discussion associated with it. And we see attrition, people get up and leaving during the meeting as they dry on. So, you know, I, I mean, we have, let's see, um, I need a, yeah, putting up article seven or eight would work. You know, because that, that is another one that's going to have some discussion.
Pretty straightforward. Most of them are CPC and people always say yes to them, even if they're expensive or a big price tag, because people say that, that it, that goes fast. I mean, there isn't too much, it's pretty straightforward.
I'll make motion to be up to the end.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay.
I do think we should disclose this memo on my.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yeah. So, um, the article eighteen.
Let me just read it as is. I assume this came from the lawyer?
Yeah.
Which one is it?
This was the information about, so petition article seventeen. First petition, money is appropriated and only spent if the board of selectmen exercises the option. So town meeting cannot force the board of selectmen to exercise the option. So the article would be placed on as is, the money could be voted to be appropriated and it would still be the selectmen's vote as to whether or not to exercise the option.
Correct. And?
Second, number two.
Michael, you're not making clear which petition.
Oh, the petition article for the purchase of the property at six hundred.
The number seventeen.
Two, right.
They're not gonna be.
The one that first came in.
Okay, but you just haven't identified which was which.
Sorry.
So in fact, I was right. It still has to go back to select.
It still has to go back to the select board to exercise the option.
Jamie, yes, thank you. Um, this is, I'm not quite sure how to, how to, what you just discussed, but this is the,
This is petition two.
The water one, which.
I'm gonna go with the other one.
Is the next one? We're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the way that would read and I just wanted.
You can't change.
You can't.
You can't.
Exactly as, as what was, what you're.
Remember yesterday was the guillotine?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
As for the second petition article, uh, it still needs to go through the forty A five process. That is, the select board has fourteen days from today to refer the proposed amendment to the planning board. The planning board must then hold a hearing on the proposed amendment within sixty five days. It must be published, the notice in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks. It must also send a notice to all necessary parties. Then the planning board must either issue a report at town meeting to its recommendations or twenty one days must elapse after the hearing is closed. If any of these steps are missed, then town meeting cannot vote the amendment. And if it does anyways, approve the amendment, then the municipal law unit would disapprove it because it's a zoning amendment. Uh, unless this, if any of the steps are missed, um, and the, and the limits, unless the steps missed is limited to the notice to abutting communities, B R P C or, uh, the executive house, office of housing and livable communities. So there is time to get all this done. The board of selectmen would have to act tonight to refer it to the planning board. And the planning board would have to immediately submit, uh, a notice to the paper within days in order to get this all done prior to town meeting.
I have a question for Georgia, if you don't mind. I don't know if you'll know the answer to this.
Kate has a question. Go ahead.
I would like to understand, it, it's my understanding that, that the, the subsurface water was in the bylaws ten, fifteen years ago and then was removed. Do you have any context of why it was, where, why subsurface was taken out and it was only surface water?
No, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I don't.
Because it was, it wasn't in the old bylaws and then somehow it got removed at one of the town meetings and Danny's trying to put it back in.
Oh, okay.
And, and I didn't know why it came out in the first place, you know, which right and form a decision to add it back in in the second place.
I don't recall.
Okay.
Kate Fletcher.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Jamie. I guess my question is, can someone, uh, can I ask Michael a question?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Michael, can you give me a brief overview of, of, uh, this is the first I'm hearing of this. And since it gets referred to the planning board, I'd like to know a little bit, just a brief overview of what's going on here.
Yeah, we would too.
So the petition article, uh, so this was submitted yesterday, uh, to the, uh, to the select board prior to the closing of the warrant. And it says to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows. In sec, in six point seven surface water supply protection overlay district, section six point seven one purpose, the following words, upon the water quality of surface waters, insert the words and groundwaters. Section six point seven two description, following the words, the S W S P O D shall include, insert the words, the recharge area of the aquifer connected to Lake Everett and that's it.
Okay. Can you send that to me so I can review it against our, uh, zoning bylaws and understand?
It's, so I will definitely send it, but it's, it's a petition. So it's as written, there's no changes, no nothing, just a hearing needs to be held on it, as is.
I understand, but I would want to, I would want to study, review it and also circulate it to the planning board. So they would have a chance to review it since it sounds like we're on a tight leash.
Yep. Well, the, the big thing is, is right now it's in the select board. Are you going to refer it to the planning board?
Ah, okay. Thank you.
I, I'll make a motion for it. I don't see why we should only protect water that comes down from rainfall. Some of it's coming up to the ground for all these, uh, all these springs that we have. It is the town's water supply. I think that it's a reason, Denny has more about water in this town, the rest of us combined. And if he feels this important, I trust him.
My only concern is that the planning board has been under a lot of pressure with all of the state's requirements and, and different, um, asks in the last few months. So I'm just feeling like, are they up to doing one more quick ask?
I mean, I, I, to Jamie's point, I have to say that this does not seem, I mean, we would want to, um, have expert opinion here, I think. And could we consider maybe a compromise of looking at this in the fall at the special town meeting that we'll be having for the school?
There is no special.
Yeah, the schools, it looks like the school's going to use sixteen M, I think it is, which means.
L.
L, which is, there's two options for them to do. One is town meetings, one is a district wide vote. It looks like they're going to do a district wide ballot.
Yeah.
So there won't be a town meeting in the fall. Not that we can't hold a town meeting in the fall, but yeah.
Danny, you said, you, you seemed to indicate that you had edits that you felt you needed to make anyway. Well, I, that's just a yes or no question. That you had edits that you were suggesting anyway.
No, no, no. These, what I had done was the way Michael read it was actually quite clear, I thought, because it showed the emphasis.
And put it into the text.
And I don't need edits. No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would, if, if, if we were to, you know, uh, uh, make a commitment to, to address this in a more, um, reasonable fashion over the summer, would you consider withdrawing your petition and then on, on, I'll give you my word that, well, this will be high priority.
Can't withdraw. We still have to leave it on because it already went, hit the deadlines. We still have to leave it on.
What do you mean deadlines?
Once a petition is submitted, it's submitted.
Because we're at the warrant meeting and.
Well, that, that's, once a petition is.
But he can pull it at the town.
No, he can't.
No.
Oh, a town meeting, he could ask, he could ask the people to not.
Stand up and say.
Right. But Nate's going to town meeting as.
It is. It's on.
We don't have to vote the warrant. Hey, you told me today we're going to vote the warrant seven days before town.
Regardless of what you do, this petition article is going on as written. You have no choice.
It's done.
Whether you close the meeting tonight, in two weeks and three weeks, it's as written, it cannot be withdrawn.
Okay. But if we don't refer it to the planning board, it effectively kills it.
We got fourteen days to decide.
No, we have fourteen days to give it to Kate and her board.
If you don't refer it to the planning board.
We're gonna miss the deadline.
Then you won't be able to do the timeline for all the steps that need to be done for a zoning amendment change. So more than likely, the department of, when it's reviewed, our bylaws are reviewed, it will be not allowed. That's why the lawyers are saying, in order to get through the forty A section of law, it needs to be referred tonight. The planning board would have to call a he, hearing.
I heard all that. The point I'm making is Kate just said that she wanted expert testimony as the chair of the planning board. I think it's a reasonable position to take. If we don't, if we don't refer to the planning board tonight, it is effectively killing it because of the issue with the state approving the bylaws. And I'm just asking Denny's deference, if he's okay with us doing this in a more measured way over the course of, of the, the fiscal year twenty six. Because if we refer tonight, we're basically putting Kate in a spot where they've got to rush it and we can't necessarily.
I don't like rushing by laws.
We can't rush a bylaw.
That's what I'm saying. I agree with you. But I also think that we have a petition in front of us and, you know.
Patrick, may I, um, I don't believe I can withdraw it.
Oh, you can.
No, legally you cannot.
But we can take a fourteen days, we can take our fourteen days we have to send it to the planning board. Doing that, planning board won't have enough time to do their end, to make it. This, we'll get voted on at town meeting, but it'll be, it won't pass the state.
Whether, whether or not the planning board wants some, so the planning board, if you refer to the planning board, they would publish it, they would hold their meeting. One of the things could be, we didn't have time to bring in professionals. Therefore, our recommendation to town meeting is that we don't approve it. That's one step that they could take. But the process, if you don't refer it tonight, it's going to planning board, it's going to go to town meeting. And regardless of the way the town votes, it's going to not be allowed because we didn't allow the process to happen.
Yeah.
So it's up to this board as to whether the planning board gets to submit its recommendations. I hate to say it would put the planning board on the spot that if they didn't feel they had the time and the rest, then they would have to make their recommendation to that effect. So.
Is this, Michael, if it gets referred to the planning board, and I'm sorry, Denny, but this is a very, this is too short of a timeframe. Um, if it does get re, referred to the planning board, is that a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
You have so much time to have a public hearing.
You have sixty five days.
I'm sorry, this is not the way to go about bylaw change.
Yeah, but citizen, it is the way of citizens petitions.
I understand. I understand, but I, I, I strongly question whether this is in the best interest of the town.
But we could, couldn't we, couldn't the planning board work on it, but not as a citizen's petition, but as a bylaw change?
They have to act on this, if this petition is in front of you.
Right. I get that part, but I'm asking a separate, I think.
There is no other.
Can I answer that, please?
Okay.
Um, yes, the planning board could, you know, bring this up as, um, you know, for consideration to work on. I mean, I'm just one person on that board, so it's, it's, you know, the will of the board. But certainly the planning board can bring this up at a meeting, um, as to whether it's something they feel should be addressed.
I, I think the first time I heard about this issue was the week I got elected five years ago. Danny has been talking about this issue for five years and frankly, none, none of us, including me, have made it a point and I don't blame them for bringing it as a petition. Now, if we have to lose a little time, I, I guess I understand. But how about we all make sure that this gets vetted because, you know, this has been a significant cause of concern around why this changed it. Nobody seems to understand why it happened. Got put into the bylaws ten, twelve years ago. Yeah. Why aren't we not protecting our water supply?
I, I know that Patrick, I know that, so Jamie, may I, may I speak?
Yes.
I know that there's been discussion of, and I'm, I fully support protecting that. I just didn't realize that we were at this point, you know, what, how early were we, like two weeks before town meeting? That we were talking about amendment, amendment to our zoning bylaws on this.
So just walking through the, the process of addressing this citizen's petition. The select board refers it, planning board holds a hearing, then the planning board submits it. State brings its recommendation to the floor of town meeting because it won't be twenty one days. So they'll have to bring a recommendation to the floor of town meeting. At that point, if you want to, then the, after the hearing, the planning board might say, like I said, they might say, Denny talked to us and we agree with them, let's go. They might say, we didn't have enough time, we're not recommending approval. But at least then the process would have been followed. So right now it's just a process question.
All right. I, I understand all the process issues here, but this is a pretty simple change, which is to revert back to how it used to be. It adds two words to section six point seven point one, and groundwaters. And it adds seven words to section six point seven point two, the recharge area of the aquifer connected, connected to Lake Everett and this is not, this basically reverts it back to how it used to be. It is not all that complicated and frankly, in my opinion, does not need to be studied. I'm going to vote that we refer to the planning board.
Why are we raising our voice? So why?
I'd like to know why it was taken out.
Yeah, so would we all. No one seems to be able to answer it. I've asked.
So does it mean that something else took its place? Does it mean?
There was a good reason to take it out at the time?
But this is the first I've seen it ever. I know, Patrick, it's been five for you, but this is one first day. Um, it seems like it needs to be thorough and not. It seems like it needs to be thorough and not rushed. To, not that Denny is wrong or that he doesn't have knowledge or he is very knowledgeable. But zoning bylaws are, um, somewhat permanent. They're not just like, oh, I'll have a chocolate ice cream or a vanilla ice cream. It's like, it's sticking, it sticks.
Yeah, but we are also spending fifty thousand dollars, I believe is the number, to actually study the, the, uh, the, the, the springs that come up to feed that water supply. Isn't that the grant that we got from, that UMass is working on?
Well, we have, we have a lot, right, we had money.
I mean, this is something that we've recognized over the last several years as an important issue. And yet it mysteriously became less important. There's been some estimates that what, a third, even two thirds of our water may be coming out of groundwater rather, springs rather than surface water? You know, so, so mysteriously.
Wait.
I, I think I'm still talking, Kate, and then by then you can talk. Um, and, and so I just point out that we have been studying this issue. And it got taken out of the bylaw. I don't think it's unreasonable to add the words back in. And, and so my position is simple.
But we haven't.
But you're not, you're actually not discussing that tonight. All you're doing is, are you referring it to the planning board to have enough time for this article to move to town meeting for debate?
And I will, I will deserve my right to discuss it however I like. Seven law, yes.
So we have people studying the groundwater.
There's a study currently happening right now with.
By who? Study says.
UMass Amherst.
For us?
Yes. You guys approved that last year.
But have we had updates or?
No, they're, they're in the, they're in the data collection period.
Okay.
And as soon as there's a report, it'll go to the Water and Sewer Commission, the draft, then the draft, once it's completed, it'll come to the Board of Selectmen.
And that's connected to this.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Why don't we wait to see what the report says?
That's okay that you could have this happen again right after, but I'm just talking about the petition article itself. There's been a citizen's petition, they've asked this to be put on town meeting. You have one decision tonight. That is, if you refer it tonight, there is a chance that all, everything can get done in time, so it can be considered at town meeting. If it's not referred tonight to it, there's not going to be a timeline sufficient to get it to a hearing. This is strictly process, not about whether it should be approved, shouldn't be approved, whatever. It's just the process.
But it is a way to kill it.
It is.
You don't refer it tonight.
You don't refer it tonight, it's not going to reach.
It's not just process. This is also.
No, it is process. If you don't do it, that's.
But if they can't, if they don't, say we do refer it.
Yep.
Right. And then planning board does or doesn't figure it out. It could be not completed.
Planning board has sixty five days to.
Technically, they have sixty five days, and if they use the whole sixty five, the process wouldn't happen. If they were willing to hold the hearing, we could get a notice out immediately. They hold the hearing, they hear from Denny, his.
We have two.
Pros or cons for it. And then they would have to, at town meeting, present a recommendation because twenty one days won't have expired. Therefore, the planning board must issue a recommendation at town meeting of whether to approve it or deny it.
I'm going to make one more point, okay, related to the first article, the, that came in. We have fifty one chapters, no, over fifty, over fifty parcels in chapter sixty one. We had one come out this week that created a bit of a.
Let's keep it germane.
I'm actually going to make my point, and it is absolutely germane to this. All right. You've got, you've got a whole bunch of these chapter sixty one properties. And there's rumor that another one may be coming up pretty soon. All right. What this does is as those chapter sixty one properties come out, it puts a higher bar on whether or not, if they're in the watershed, they can be converted into buildable lots. And I think frankly, that right now, the first one is germane to the second one, which is we are in a little bit of a crunch because nobody else, nobody seems to have anticipated, what do you mean? That, that, uh, that, that the value of some of these parcels was going to be so great that we would see a tremendous pressure on development of some of these open tracks of land. So I think that this is something that maybe we shouldn't just brush up so quickly. Because if we wait a whole year, we might see, we might lose another year in terms of protecting some of these, some of these lands in the watershed that's, that support your drinking water. I'm on a well, but half the town is on this, on this, on this, on this, uh, water supply. And I'm concerned about a whole lot of these properties coming out of chapter sixty one. Thank you.
Not everything's an emergency. Not everything can be rushed. And not everything is connected, interconnected. And I, it sounds like from what Michael said, we are studying the water and the groundwater, and a report's due back. I feel we shouldn't, without Kate, uh, her board has had a lot on their plate the last three months. Um, I don't know.
What was that?
I just feel like, it seems like every buzzard season, we get something thrown at us that is an emergency and has to be done right away. And, and it turns out it doesn't. And we make the vote and we end up paying down the road for it.
I'm not against a bylaw, but I think it shouldn't be rushed.
And I don't see where a year is going to.
I don't think it'll take a year.
I mean, we could have a special town meeting if we really wanted to push it. I'd like to wait for that report to come back and see what they say and see what the goal on it is, where it is. And what that report is, and then work with the planning board to process this to the best, you know, to the town. I just don't like being pushed into things every meet, every, you know, town meeting we have.
I've got one last question for Denny. How did the, how did the water study, in your opinion, morph from what was originally planned with UMass to what it is now?
The, the, uh, I was the initial, uh, instigator of this, of a study. Uh, and what I asked for in my letter to the Berkshire Eagle, after I went to a meeting of water and sewer to where I suggested a, a study demarcating where the groundwater that was going into the Lake Avrick was coming from. Uh, I went to that meeting and, uh, there was a developer there and they were in process and it was, uh, in violation of the open meeting law. And, and I realized, oh gosh, uh, there's a problem. And I forgot your question.
Being a, the, the, the study, the, the UMass study changed from its original in.
Yes.
Incarnation.
So I, 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 I have, I was, I've studied the, uh, groundwater extensively. And, um, and so I went to UMass and spoke with, uh, Steve Maybe, who was.
We did a conference call on that.
Yeah, and we had a conference call with the state geologist. And he brought in Dave Baut, who was the, uh, hydro geologist at, at UMass. And, um, and we talked about doing that study. And then at the, uh, town meeting, the last town meeting, um, uh, the, uh, Water and Sewer stood up and, and, and using my name, said that, uh, that they were doing a safe yield study, which is a study of how much water we can pull out of the, the resource. And not a determination of where that water is coming from. And that's, that was, that's part of the reason why I, I brought this forward is on, on trying to get the town to raise its awareness and make the appropriate decisions, if necessary, of where the water's coming from and what action we should take. That's basically.
And so this, so the safe yield study isn't necessarily studying whether it's coming from spring fed groundwater? It's more about how much we can pull out?
No, they're determining how much is coming in based on.
Okay.
Subsurface water coming in.
Okay.
Kate Fletcher.
Question for, um, do you have a select board meeting next Thursday? Because if you do, um, and you can send me some information on this, um, and if this will fall within the timeframe, frame that.
The only way you can get two weeks' notice is it would go into the paper for the next two weeks. By the time it comes out of it, you would have it the week before town meeting. Somewhere in the week before town meeting, you'd hold the hearing. And then you'd have to bring your report to the floor of town meeting when this article comes forward.
So May thirteenth, you would be the earliest you could do it, see or have your hearing.
Okay. All right. And then I'll just make a comment that I think, you know, I understand that some of you are immersed in this. It sounds like, um, Patrick, you've been on some calls and I don't know who else, but, um, maybe other members of the planning board have, I don't know. But certainly I have not been immersed in this. So I would just, you know, be a little bit careful about the assumptions here in terms of how much other board members, how much information that we have. Thank you.
I, 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 I completely gained my own chuck on, I did not, on, on, everything seems to be an emergency. I spent the last nearly two years working on Husonic Water Works, where they have a manganese problem coming in and the water got polluted. And they don't even know how it started coming in over the last ten or fifteen or twenty years. But it definitely was a new problem on a hundred year old system. What happens if land goes through extensive development? And we're already got one that, that, that may get approved with the system. What happens with, if much other land goes through extensive development, you can't undo an development and its impact on the watershed. You can't undo that. And so I would just suggest that, I get that we're asking people to work hard over the next couple of weeks to maybe try to get up to speed on this issue, but we can't undo damage to the water source. You can't do it. And that's why we're, that's why all these issues around big tracks of land potentially having, coming out of chapter sixty one without, without a consideration, with only consideration of the surface water and not the subsurface water worries me a little bit. And my worry frankly, got a little bit higher after, after, you know, seeing how quick this, this first petition came up, which was basically adding a whole new street to the town. I, I think we should.
How much property are we talking about in the watershed? That's.
I mean, it's a massive number, chapter sixty one, the watershed.
Why does this have to do with sixty one? Because of the interplay.
Cause sixty one.
Oh, I'm being a little facetious.
Well, it has to be sixty one because that land is right now largely forested. And when people pull it out of sixty one and pay the taxes on it, they can put it in a subdivision. As is, as is basically proposed on our lake crossroad. So you have that going on around the watershed and it might impact in some way the groundwater that's associated with it. Rather than the water kind of coming off the mountain or coming up through the ground, it just kind of all of a sudden is different because we developed land around it. Right now, the water's pretty good here. We're seeing, the town could vote it down or the planning board can say this isn't a concern of theirs. If we refer it tonight, then, then, you know, then at least the planning board has a chance to hear it if they want to.
So refer it tonight. The planning board definitely has sixty five days before they have to have, hold a hearing, correct?
Right.
So they, if they look into it and they can't come up with what they don't have to have a hearing before this meeting.
Once again, if they, right, they don't, there's nothing we can do to force them to go greater than sixty five, but by referring, if they publish it, if we get it to the papers right away, there is time for them to have a public hearing, even if it is to say we don't, you know, we need more time on it. It's just whether or not you even, you want this citizen petition to potentially move forward. If you, if you don't vote tonight to move it forward, it's not going to, you can't get it within the timeframe of town meeting. Therefore, we'd still vote it at town meeting, but it would go to the AG's office and because it didn't follow changes to the bio, zoning bylaw law, it would not be approved.
Right.
Kate?
Yeah, there's still.
Kate?
Cooking what?
I'm hungry too. Um, so if we pass this along to you tonight, it doesn't pressure you to make a decision by the meeting night?
Hey, I'm putting not, I'm putting it on the agenda for, uh, May sixth. That's our next meeting.
So why not refer?
Uh, May sixth is not fourteen days.
That's not two weeks.
We have to, has to run two, two weeks in the paper to hold the hearing.
But then holding a hearing is disgusting.
Well, the chair can call the hearing. I hate to say it, it puts a lot of, puts pressure on the chair. We'd have to get a meeting set and start getting the postings in the paper immediately.
Right. You might not be able to do it to the tenth or thirteenth, Kate. You might have to schedule a special meeting of the planning board to pull off the schedule.
I know, I'm just looking at the calendar. Give me one second, please.
And Elizabeth had, Liz had her.
I saw. I was waiting for Kate to finish.
So, thank you, Jamie. I appreciate that. Um, so our scheduled meeting is, is May sixth. We have someone coming scheduled already. So, um, Michael, you were saying we would have to have it by the thirteenth?
You would have to have it by, you would have to have it done by the Friday before town meeting. So we have to get it two weeks in the paper. So if we work on it next week, we could probably get it for that week of the thirteenth, the week before town meeting.
So we'd have a, a special, we'd have a, a public hearing. That's the week of May twelfth.
Right.
Okay, you guys make your decision and, um, the planning board will, the planning board will deal.
Elizabeth, did, Liz, did you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question. I'm on the planning board as well, and I'm sure we're willing to look at it, you know, um, it's important. And I agree with Kate.
Kate, thank you.
Okay, what do you think? I mean, either way, the planning board, unless we do our fourteen days, the planning board does not have to come up with this.
Well, they might not be able to. It might be too complicated or too lengthy. But it doesn't mean it's dead in the water, no pun intended.
No, I mean, this is something we've got to follow through on. If it doesn't make this meeting, we're not going to drop it and lose it. So.
Especially since it's a water study.
Where we, we'll take the year to really do every possible study we can, you know, and get this down right where it should be. I just don't like a rush and.
I think we should also look at the prior bylaw that was amended ten years ago and see if this is.
See why it wasn't amended.
Planning board would do?
Yeah, well, okay.
And it might have been a good reason they did it. It might not have been a good reason they did it.
We don't know.
We don't know.
One reason to do is it makes it easier to develop large tracts of land. I don't know if that was the purpose, but I think that's what the net effect was of the change.
But this is just in the district around the reservoir.
Yeah.
Which was protected.
I'm sorry, did I miss it? Was there a date for that actual change?
Yeah.
When it changed, I think it was around ten years ago. Denny knows.
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen, twelve years ago.
Do you have a record at the?
And Chuck, you were there and I was there, yeah.
Was I slept in there?
Was I slept in there?
I don't recall that. I mean, I can't recall.
Hey, prior to your hearing, I'll pull whatever records we have from that time period.
There had to be a reason.
It would be good to see the, um, uh, the town clerk has that information, right, Mike? It would be good to see the, um, uh, the town clerk has that information, right, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so anything you can send to the full planning board would be great.
Are we referring that?
No, it's made a motion.
So, I'm just saying, so if we defer to you, it's not putting pressure on you to get this done before the meeting.
Oh, there will be pressure, believe me.
You can handle it, Kate.
I guess, no, because if it doesn't, then we'll just take the year to really study this and get it.
Look at this meeting.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just. It's something we won't drop. And if it doesn't go through this meeting, we'll, you know, spend a year, you know, getting this straightened out and getting the really proper bylaw that we need.
I, I know you will have my back. Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion to refer. Oh, boy.
We have a society voted in that town meeting. If there's, if the.
We'll need a second.
If the planning board comes up with a bylaw by then, which is, I think is really tight. We're not forcing them to do it. You know, we're not saying we want this bylaw done this meeting. It's more likely that I have any more than one public hearing. That there's questions that have to be answered.
More than likely than that would just be a recommendation to the town, because this is going on.
It's going on anyways, unless we don't.
Now, if the planning board needed to have further hearings than the rest, then their recommendation would be that it's not complete at this time and recommend not approval at town meeting. But if you don't refer it tonight, then the process of getting it approved as a zoning amendment will not happen for, in time for this town meeting. Therefore, no matter what's voted, it's not going to be enacted. So if you want to allow the chance for it to go through the proper zoning change parameters, you would have to vote it tonight to be referred.
Okay.
I think Katie wanted to.
I have a question. So if it's referred, then you guys will get the study from UMass?
Nothing to do with UMass. It's separate.
Gotcha. Okay.
I mean, it'd be nice to have that, the help of decision, the planning board decision, but.
Yeah.
So they can discuss that on their end and if they feel they can't come up with a bylaw by the meeting day, they'll recommend that it isn't complete and we'll continue doing it until we get it complete. And pretty likely bring it up at the next general town meeting or if it's that important, we'll pass some other things coming up and maybe have us set up another meeting.
May I, may I comment?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, because the subject, the subject of the study that's underway is different. And the conclusions are different from what I'm, I'm talking about.
Okay.
It's, in other words, um, they're not really, they're, I mean, they're looking at the yield of what I'm talking about, but they're not talking about where it is or, or whatever.
So what is it? Cause I'm not quite sure. What's, so I know, like, if you do a project, you put your catch patients in and stuff and it, water goes into ponds and stuff. And distills and all that. What is this doing, this bylaw? What is it?
It's, it's, what it's doing is it's bringing back something which through whatever, whatever process, whatever happened in two thousand thirteen doesn't matter. But what happened was, um, the groundwater, which is providing a substantial amount of the source of what the town drinks, uh, lost protection. And what this does is bring it back.
Okay, so say I had a piece of property within that zone and I was going to develop it. What does that do to me developing that piece of property? What testing do I got? What, what does it, I don't, I'm not following what this, what this bylaw does.
It, what it does is it, it's, I, I suppose it could make a development smarter because it would be more, there would be more, you know, more sensitivity to where our drinking water is coming.
Sure, may not stop a development. It may.
No, no, it's not going to stop anything.
They may have to, we do.
Well, they might, might have to consider, um, the groundwater, uh, in their, you know, their plan.
Okay.
Right now, the only thing they have to consider is. Yeah, no, it's okay. Right now, the only thing we have to do is it rains and the water comes off the mountain and it flows into the Lake Avrick. Right now, it used to be that if you're going to develop something in the watershed, and this is the surface water supply protection overlay district, the name of the thing describes what it is. It's protecting the water supply. So it used to be you had to make sure before you wanted to develop anything in that district that you were going to take a look at the groundwater, the, the aquifer and take a look at the water coming off the mountain. Somewhere, for some reason, ten years, twelve years ago, got changed to just the water off the mountain.
I know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Kate, I saw your hand. I was waiting for Patrick.
I know. You know, I, I'm okay. I want you to know that I'm, I'm fine with your moving it, uh, forward tonight. Um, notwithstanding, um, plenty of good reasons in my, in my opinion, not to rush this. I'm okay with your, uh, uh, making the motion to go forward with this.
Thank you.
I do wish, I do wish there had been better communication with, uh, someone on the planning board, including me. But, um, that's what it is and.
Well, we just got it, so it's not.
Just got it ourselves.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not addressing that to you at all. So, um, I think people get in, in their own worlds and, and wrapped up in their own thing and this is not to criticize anyone. I'm just making a comment that I wish that, you know, people are welcome to come to planning board meetings and um, I'm not in the business of blocking agenda items. So I, I certainly wish this had come up earlier. So, but with that said, I'm fine with your, uh, moving this forward. Okay?
Okay, that makes our decision a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate, for your understanding.
I was thinking I might be hungry.
I'll be over.
Okay, uh, I'll second Patrick's motion then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we just need to vote to close the warrant?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the warrant.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
I just want to say, you know, thank you to Michael and.
Thank you, Michael.
This board, all the head of departments, the finance committee. It takes a lot, a lot of work to get this budget and try to keep our taxes down and keep progressing forward with the town, so.
And making smart decisions.
And it was a pretty smooth, uh, operation in this whole thing, so. I just want to personally thank everybody.
Good bless you.
To the voters.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.